Item two, consent agenda. The following items of routine nature normally approved at board meetings will be approved by one vote unless some board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. A, minutes of October twelfth, two thousand fifteen, regular meeting. B, activity fund expenditures. C, approving premises for and signing warrants of A, general fund, building fund, C, child nutrition fund.
What all they have to get fixed on the kitchen equipment office stuff, I was curious what all it was. Oh, it was increasing P O for twenty-six fifty-two?
Oh, that's uh, on that walk-in.
They finally get the door sealed up on it?
I think they've got the door sealed up on it, let the pressure go out. With the compressor went out, it didn't fan blow.
Probably need to get the door fixed so the compressor won't happen to work so hard.
We've called, uh, we did escape Kinkool. And they've come out and ordered, supposedly they will come out and then ordered, and now they're gonna come back out. Trying to get a hold of them, they don't wanna answer, but try to get a hold of them. Luckyville, they don't wanna put, uh, component parts to it outside of the cooling mechanism. Because it's not their unit, it's Kinkool's unit. And they'll come out and do an emergency service on the cooling unit to help us out. But it's Kinkool's unit, they call Kinkool, well, if I can get somebody out there, supposedly, you know, he did come out and look at it, yeah. I'll get the part order to get back out there. They don't wanna come back out.
Uh, no pain then, till he gets the door fixed.
I haven't, I haven't.
Huh?
I haven't, I can't, I can't pay them.
Yeah, I mean.
I can't pay somebody till they get it fixed.
Yeah.
It's been a mess. To this point, I will tell you something, at this point, it, it probably is cheap to put in the unit, which sounds ridiculous.
Yeah, 'cause that was not.
'Cause it's not that old.
Yeah, I mean, Jimmy.
We've had problems with it since we got it, dude.
Huh?
So we've had problems with it since we got it.
Yeah, it was working. And, and that's what Luckyville said, Kinkool should be able to go back for you and get it on warranty, but I can't do it. Kinkool kinda, about it. Anyway, answer your question, that is a compressor and a boiler thing on that walk-in. 'Cause it started, it quit ciddling when he didn't write it, the end of word.
Right.
And he had, they had a guy in the area that just happened to have a boiler on the truck that wasn't the right one, but he came by and put it on, you know, ordered water, then came back and, uh, he saw it was pretty bad.
Yeah, hell.
Trying to think how old that thing is, it ain't four years old, though. Yeah, it's older than that, 'cause it's here when I got here.
Well, it had just got here.
When you got here?
'Cause it was put in, yeah, it would've been that, it'd been four years, 'cause it was just put in, that.
A disaster.
Does that have a P O number on it?
Top right, corner. Should say like eleven dash.
Twenty sixteen, twenty-one eleven.
It's a bitch. Eight twenty-one, it'll be the funds, it'll be eleven.
Is there a reason they won't come back out here, or they just won't say, I mean, I'm, that's odd.
Well, because, I, oh, no, I, I, I don't know.
Just 'cause they don't wanna warranty, is that the issue?
No, I don't know. I know he came out, he looked at the door, or the doors there.
Well, didn't they put a door seal on it last year, too? Didn't we do that?
Dollar one.
Yeah, that's right, I, we did do that, you know, I mean, I want.
Door still, you know, that by law.
Right, well, that's what I mean, I mean, hell, how can we, what, is there anything we can do to make them do that, I mean, get on them about it? 'Cause I'm like, I, I just, like you guys, I'm tired of paying to have it worked on all the time, but, I mean, it's four years old. It shouldn't, we shouldn't have to buy another new one, because the people that we bought it from won't take care of it, you know? What can't we do, is there something we can do to get them to?
I, I'd call the company.
Yeah.
Track it down, see who they got it from, and go that route. And see if maybe the company can get their, go through the distributor.
Right.
Try that route.
Right.
They, they may, they may have other routes to go through.
Right.
Try it that way.
Well, I think we need to do something with it, just, man, it's just nonstop with that thing. 'Cause my deal is, well, if you get one from Luckyville and it does the same thing, are they gonna be just like them? Because now they don't wanna have to warranty it, too, you know?
They're all big whatever they got, just getting it.
Yeah.
Your votes on item two?
Second.
You bowl?
Yes.
Reason?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes. On three, superintendents and principals.
Okay, on the district revenue collections, they show that the November gross production collections were thirteen thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars eighty-six cents. That compares to fiscal year fifteen, last year gross production collections of thirty-two thousand nine hundred twenty-two twenty-six. And fiscal year fourteen, collections and gross production nineteen thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Total revenue, uh, this November, uh, stand at one hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred four dollars and ninety-three cents compared to November last year. Uh, both of these numbers are minus school land, of course, uh, because it comes in later in the month, uh, two hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Uh, which of course is a pretty significant decrease in the month of November. District budget, of course, to deal with very long-term projections, but an actual dollar amount. July, uh, two thousand fourteen through November two thousand fourteen, compare that to July two thousand fifteen to November two thousand fifteen, shows an actual drop in local revenue collections of seventy thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. So, when you start Luckyville, um, where your expenditures are and what you, revenue you have coming in, uh, that gives you some idea of, uh, what we're looking at. Decreased, uh, revenue collection and budget cutbacks, of course, are what the general discussion is being heard across the state. You have to realize that the current state fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget was propped up on one-time monies, for the most part, which are not gonna be available for fiscal year two thousand sixteen. Uh, the state works closer towards the end of the year, the fiscal year June thirtieth, that fiscal hole starting to get much larger. That's Friday, November the sixth, revenue collections for the state are running at two hundred fourteen million seven hundred fifty thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents behind last year's comparable date. So, it's gonna be a long time until two thousand, until June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, you know, after we're projecting the six hundred million dollar shortfall in collections. Uh, you have to realize that that two hundred fourteen million dollar shortfall is before tax collections come in. And they're predicting tax collections are gonna be down significantly, and before they start coming in, we're already at a two hundred fourteen million dollar shortfall. Uh, the heating, the air conditioning unit covering the offices, uh, it seems to be out on the heat side. Uh, that's gonna be an electrical unit, runs off of electrical heat strips, so hopefully it can be an economical fix. But due to the age and the efficiency level of that unit, there's a chance parts might not be available. Luckyville's gonna be here in the minute, in the morning to look at it. Uh, Mrs. Williams left today, she let me know that she's having trouble with her unit. We'll have a look at that later before I leave tonight, 'cause I set it, see if I can get it to come on, hopefully she had it set, she had it set a little off, so I set it differently to where I can tell if it's working. If it's not working correctly, we'll have them looking at it when they're here also. Also, uh, forgot to put this on here, uh, they're having a lot of troubles with these computers here in the library, and also the computers that, uh, we, uh, got donated, uh, from Sandridge. They had one of them go down here in the library, the motherboard went bad in it, Patricia, her motherboard went bad, she's got one. Uh, so they're getting at the end of the cycle, really nice computers, some of them's getting into cycles, so we've got, uh, prices on, uh, a set of computers. And we can get these computers very cost-effectively to replace these, these are X P, uh, which you can't update X P anymore, they're, they're past end of life. Uh, if we go online and buy computers, uh, and buy new with Windows seven, it's extremely expensive to order new. Um, s- some of the computers that we have ordered are off lease from banks and large corporations, that's what we had bought in the last couple of years, so we've got a price on those. And so probably, when we come back in December, we'll see that we've replaced these, probably some in the office, we'll go through and try to eliminate, if we can, looking at, you know, what the price is. We can see a group of computers to replace these X Ps that are going out, uh, with Windows seven. We can order those refurbished a lot cheaper with Windows seven than buying new with Windows seven. And I don't understand how they can do that, but they can. So, but, I know, it's just a whole lot more cost-effective that way. And so far, I don't think we've had our, well, at least if we're ordering, I think they have like a lifetime warranty, one of our like a five-year warranty, and that's better if you can buy one of them. They're talking about three hundred fifty dollars for a tower.
It's pretty cheap.
Shout out to that one, I had to change mine.
Well.
I, 'cause I got told I couldn't use mine anymore, because it had Windows seven on it, because my shop program changed to a different operating, and you could not use it. So, it's your computer and you paid for the program, but you can't use it unless you update it.
The problem with these, the problem with these, see, I was thinking the same thing when I needed a laptop, like, I told him, I can't buy it through the school.
Yeah.
Anything else, 'cause you can't buy it without, I, I can't buy it without paying taxes on it, so, you know, I can't do that, so I got with him and said, hey, I wanna buy one of these also, but I have to buy it on my own, you know?
Yeah.
I, I want one also, what would it cost me to buy one? Well, you know, it's basically the same price, however, it's from Canada. You gotta buy, the, the, this company's out Canada. Well, when you buy it through the school, see, we have, we use our federal tax I D.
Right.
We don't pay sales tax on it.
Right.
However, as an individual, you have to provide them with all kinds of I D, your social security number and all this, and you're put on the federal I D watch list and everything else. Well, and, you know, and given your credit card's number and all this other stuff. And I said, no, I'm not going, I don't mind, you know, buying it, I understand using, you know, a credit card to buy it, but at the same time, I'm not gonna provide you with, the, the gentleman's, I'm not gonna go into the gentleman's name, but if I told you the gentleman's name, you'd go, oh, no.
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna give you my social security number and all my private personal information, and, and we've bought lots of stuff off of them, lots of computers.
Yeah.
And he said, well, you know, I understand that, but I mean, that's federal law for it to cross over in the United States for homeland security details.
Right.
So I, I went and bought a new one here in the United States, 'cause it's just for, I, I just don't wanna, I'm, I'm sure anybody, you know, get all my personal information offline if they wanted to. But I thought that was kinda foolish on my part, just to provide it to somebody in another country without being that pumped for it.
Exactly.
Anyway, that's it for me, Luckyville.
Yeah, a couple things that aren't on here, I don't know, we, uh, had school pictures here a couple weeks back, and, uh, had some issues come up. The company we use, Lifetouch, recently, some of you may know Blunks. You heard Blunks, Lifetouch bought them out, Lifetouch is a national, um, picture-taking yearbook service program, um, and they're big time, so they bought Blunks to basically get their customers in. They're still have some holdovers from the old Blunks folks, and, uh, we had a few issues bopped up, so I don't know if anybody heard anything from anyone, but we've got some issues taken care of that we knew about, and they're having retakes Friday, so I don't know if any of your kids missed, or if anybody wasn't satisfied with your kids' pictures that you bought them, but the retakes are Friday, and we'll have some activity pictures, too. Obviously, you can see the book fair, uh, where I think she's gonna start setting it up tomorrow, so, if you all decide you didn't have a chance to come in, you might try to come in tomorrow, 'cause she's gonna start getting it packed up for Wednesday morning early to leave. Uh, since the last time we had a meeting, we have parent-teacher conferences, went extremely well, um, everyone came out, got to see the bomb video on the big screen in the hall. We only had about four or five parents who weren't able to make it, and I think every one of those, we had three set pre-scheduled things, you know, family outings thing, so, you know, you almost don't even count them. Um, that's a great turnout, and parents of this community, grandparents, aunts, uncles, guardians, whoever they are that comes for those kids, need to be committed for showing up and, uh, meeting with those teachers, that's, you know. As a high school teacher with a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty kids, when I was teaching, I would have three to four parents total in two days. So the fact that everybody comes, this is a pretty neat deal. Uh, we have fall carnival, and I know everyone, I came into contact with selling tickets, had a great time, um, really complimented the kids, you know, I heard a lot of people talking about, you know, the booths that were set up and the kids that were working them and everything, so it went well. Uh, seniors are well on their way with their fundraising for the senior trip, they're, they're knocking it down pretty good right now, they had, uh, Mexican dinner this Saturday, um, had a great crowd, good turnout for their raffle and bingo. Basketball season, we're a weekend now, um, we played two high school games, one junior high, three elementary games, um, and on a side note, we got a call today from Higgins, and, uh, they had, uh, something, we had confirmed our games here a couple months ago, three months ago, whatever it was, and they called today and, and they, uh, wanted to see, you know, what we had as far as game times, and we had down five, and that's what we had confirmed, they had asked if we could, you know, look at that and see about playing at six. And, uh, you know, they're, they're not our farthest game, we, we'll go out to Darazet, Darazet's a little farther out, but, uh, we're gonna play Higgins at six, and they're gonna come here at six when they come here, so, that's a little change to be aware of, and we're gonna start getting that word out immediately. Tomorrow night, we're gonna have Alan Cleo here at six-thirty, high school only, so start at six-thirty, just high school game. Um, we'll have a pink-out game for breast cancer awareness, we hope everyone can come out for the first, first high school home game. Uh, this week marks the annual celebration of our veterans, and we'll be having a Veterans Day ceremony, um, currently working with Mr. Wardrop to make sure we have the assembly on the best day for our veterans, um. It'll either happen Wednesday or Friday, I think right now we're leaning towards Friday, um, we'll be letting everyone know which day, you know, and the times on that. Um, me and, me and Mr. Wardrop are gonna talk tomorrow morning, first thing, and, uh, we've tried to get in contact with some, some more of our veterans around town, and I know he's gonna try to get in contact with them, too, but have them come up, probably, you know, have a lunch for them on Friday, uh, maybe Wednesday, and then have an assembly with some of the kids, and Coach Neal and, uh, Mrs. Harper, getting that kinda coordinated, and I know we've got, some of our kids are gonna participate in that, too. Um, as of today, enrollment sits at seventy-nine, we're still down, and by comparison, we're down nineteen students from this time last year, but we're still up thirteen from when I first started, so, you know, it is what it is. Late this week and into early next week, Stevie, my wife and I will be starting back up our annual Angel Tree program, if you don't remember what that is. Uh, we'll send, we send letters home, um, district-wide to all of our parents and guardians, asking for anyone that might be in need this holiday season to give us the ages, sizes, and a few of the wants for their children, toy-wise, or, or what have you. Um, we'll compile that list and get with Sharon Walker and the bank, and, uh, you know, we'll, we utilize their Angel Tree they have down there, and make customers, community members, and the like, to pick up angels off the tree, buy those items and return them to the school. Um, I've done it, me and Stevie have done it for three years now, um, we've had great participation, you know, um, you know, small community here, but you still have people that are in need that, you know, you may not even think, you know, the average person may think that, you know, everybody's fine, no, no big deal, but you still have, you still have people that need some help, and, and I wanna help those people and make sure that they understand that, you know, we're here, we're here to help them out, and it's, it's been really nice to help them out for the last three years, and I want it to be something that keeps going here for a long time. Uh, Mrs. Badley and Miss Lider have been off, too, and are completing their literacy first trainings, we're still be on our way tomorrow evening with football games. And I think I forgot something, but I don't remember what it is, so.
Item four, board to consider and vote to approve American Fidelity Assurance Company as a district section one-twenty-five plan.
Okay, this, uh, housekeeping deal, American Fidelity Insurance Co., Assurance Company, is, uh, a company that works with schools in Oklahoma, and it's Oklahoma-based company, we got Oklahoma City. And, uh, what this one-twenty-five plan is, is when you have, uh, uh, medical expenses, uh, that plan is where they can take, if you so choose as an employee, they can take money out of your paycheck, report taxes, and put it in an account and hold it there. And let's say you go in and get a prescription, and it costs you twenty-five dollars or so, and you build up X amount of dollars or however many, you can file on your section one-twenty-five plan, and you can get that money back. You get that money, pull it out of your paycheck, and set it in an account, and just report taxes, you don't pay any income taxes on it, that's all it is. And we just need approval by the board that American Fidelity Assurance Company is our one-twenty-five, section one-twenty-five plan company.
And membership free, or is that?
No. Got it. And they do, they do our four-oh-three-B and, you know, other things, of course, but just, I don't know, am I the only one that does one-twenty-five, or is there other ones? Okay, but there's other teachers that have, uh.
I got a four-oh-three-B, so I have a four-oh.
Yeah, there's other teachers that have other sections and other services through.
Cancer coverage.
Yeah, things like that. I've always had one-twenty-five, after years.
They just take it out, like?
They take it out of my paycheck before.
You can tell them yours for a certain mail.
Yeah, yeah, you can tell them how much you want, every month. If you, you know, if you're sitting there and, and you have a reoccurring prescription or something like that, and you know about what it, it costs every month, and or for a year's time, you can say, okay, I know I'm gonna pay this many dollars on prescriptions every year, and, you know, you know what tax bracket you're in. You can take that out of your paycheck every month, and you can say, say you're in a twenty-five percent tax bracket, you can get, you can reimburse yourself for that, say twenty-five percent of your income taxes. That's all it is.
Yep.
So you'll have to pay for it every, anyway.
Yep.
Or we'll just save twenty-five percent on it.
I'm making motion to approve that one for.
I'll take it. You bowl?
Yes.
Yes, Herrera?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes. Item five, board to consider and take possible action to approve with or without possible changes, disapprove or deny no action on selection of calendar or scheduled board meeting date in two thousand sixteen.
Don't go on, I made a mistake, I didn't pass this out, I had this in a different place, I'm sorry. Let me get this passed out, 'cause there is a change on this. Something I wanna point out. All dates correspond with this year. Nope, I changed it, and I guess when I hit save, it did not save. This needs to be approved with a correction, so I can, uh, I need to take these back up and approve with a correction, let me check something I said. Okay, the correction needs to be, 'cause I know I changed it, but I guess what I of March, it says March the fourteenth, that needs to be March the seventh.
When is spring break?
Starts the fourteenth through the eighteenth. First time I did it, I had it on there the fourteenth, and I went back through, double checking it, and I, and I caught that, and I changed it to the seventh. I got called away, and I guess when I closed it down, I must've not saved it, and I pulled it back up and printed it, it printed as fourteen.
So what about April? Is it the fourth, it's the eleventh?
Yeah, it's the eleventh. That's the second Tuesday.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I mean, second Monday, I'm sorry.
Yep, yep, yep.
He's busy on Tuesdays.
And if, if you approve it with the correction of March seventh rather than the fourteenth, um, I'll go back, pull it up and I'll print it numerous. And that's what we'll send to the county. But I said, all the dates are the second Monday of the month except for March, March two thousand sixteen needs to be March the seventh as opposed to March fourteenth. That will get it off of spring break and off of the Oklahoma City Spring Life Stock Show, which I'm sure will be during that week, sometime during that week.
You what? I make a motion we approve that with the correction of March seventh instead of March fourteenth.
All those in favor?
Bower.
Yes.
Reed, Chris, Hera, yes, Morris.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Excuse me, what is that?
Yes, let's get these back up while I get the correct one out there.
Item six, board to consider and take possible action on one-time contract for services with Sandra Leescamp. And, uh, student assessment is about five hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay, we have a student that we need to have assessed. Uh. And you wanna look at it? It'll be a one-time assess- assessment in an area that we do not have anyone on staff to do a student assessment in this area. And this lady has agreed to come for this assessment. It's, uh, and it's broken down on the contract. Cost, burden, test, mileage. There's the other.
Pena.
I didn't, not ask Pena's.
This is very important. Is that a question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I actually, I didn't know what, what she, I didn't know if it.
I, I had, I, I knew what he was talking about after you told me it's four.
Is there a motion on item six?
I have a motion to approve a one-time contract for services with Sandra Leescamp.
Check it.
All those in favor?
Bower.
Yes.
Reed, Chris, Hera, next, Morris.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes. Item seven, board to consider and take possible action on the hiring of Lauren Blueball, certified staff beginning twelve, fourteen, fifteen and for the remainder of the fiscal year sixteen.
Okay, Miss Blueball is a young lady who has been doing her student teaching. And I'd like to offer her a certified position beginning the fourteenth of December after she graduates and becomes eligible to, uh, begin working for the school district. As a certified staff member in our elementary school, um, beginning December the fourteenth, um, through the remainder of the school year. Uh, compensation amount for that time would be sixteen, six seventy-eight. And, uh, we have a place for, uh, she does a very good job with students. And, uh, I think, uh, we've, uh, really been at the school district to have her on staff, working with kids. And she does really.
What class are you gonna teach?
Where you going? Which group do you decide where you're going? Put her in third grade? Okay. Put her in third grade and move, uh, rather than, other than the older ones, right? That's what.
Yeah, I'm starting badly there. One take four, one take there.
Yeah. Has she completed her student teaching there?
No, she's completing it.
Yeah, she'll be completing it and graduate and will walk and be out of school on the fourteenth of December. Prior to the fourteenth of December, she can't be compensated in any way until that day.
Is that for all of the, cause I have someone that I know that they're gonna start their student teaching and one of their schools is gonna be paying them as substitutes.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
Well, then you better take that video back and.
Is there a motion?
I can more simply approve the hiring of Lauren Blueball as a certified staff after.
Yeah.
Without pay.
Without pay until I'm starting certified at twelve, fourteen, fifteen, the remainder of school.
Second.
All those in favor?
Bower, Reed.
Yes.
Hera. Yes. Morris.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Try to make new business.
I have something right now I wanna bring up. Um, with our bond election tomorrow, um, going out and talking with people and discussing some things with some of our citizens and teachers and, um, just people in, around freedom in general. It has been brought to my attention that a couple of months ago, we put this project together unanimously, put it together to present. And now we unanimously aren't supporting it. And I kinda take offense to that. I think if we worked as long as we did to get the priority list together, to get it out there, we custom discussed and figured things out. We renovated, we took projects down, we went, I mean, we went all over the place with this until we finally came up with something as a group that we all agreed on. We all voted yes. And now, I guess it just frustrates me and concerns me that we have people sitting here with us tonight that are not supporting it. And are not promoting it in the way that we discussed it several months ago. I'm gonna tell you what I've been telling people, that their main concern is we're getting a brand new gym. No, we're not. We're renovating the gym. We have a roof that leaks. When that roof leaks, water heats up, lights burst and fall on the floor. If our kids are in there, someone's gonna get hurt. Water on the floor, someone's gonna slip and fall. We had a junior high ball game when all, most of us were there and saw every timeout, every quarter, every half, we had to go up and wipe up water. That to me is not acceptable. And I know it's not acceptable for you guys either. You guys have said it, you voiced it, it's not acceptable. But yet, we're not gonna support something that's gonna fix this problem for more than a couple of years. Fixing a flat roof for forty thousand dollars every two years is flushing money down the toilet. And I'm done doing it and I've heard you guys say the same thing. We've gotta do it right. And if passing this bond is what gets it done and makes things last thirty-plus years and it's gonna cost me and most of you guys fifty to a hundred dollars more a year. I'm gonna do it for my kid's safety. Secure entrance. I am the only one in here that has a daughter down the first hallway, someone walks in that is not secure. Nobody has to check in at the office it says to, but nobody does. It took Sandy Hook ten to, five to ten minutes and twenty-seven of them were gone. It takes Woods County Sheriff's Department to get out here, go on a hundred and twenty miles an hour and not getting in an accident himself, fifteen minutes. That's five minutes longer than it took for Sandy Hook to get wiped out. I'm not accept, I'm not fine with that. I wanna secure entrance. This heating and cooling, obviously, we have an issue with the heating and cooling. Not only just the boiler, but other units. I'm tired of putting Band-Aids, tired of doing duct tape and baling wire to fix things. I want to know that we as a group still support what we put out there. I've had plenty of people call me, I know they've called you guys. I just want everyone to sit here and think about, we put it out there as a group, this is what we want to do. We need to jointly support it. I've said my piece. Hope you all understand. But I'm, I'm frustrated. I just don't understand how fifty to a hundred dollars through the year. I mean, that's a happy mill a month maybe, if that, for some of us, to give up for our kids' safety. And it's a community pride. I mean, it's embarrassing when other towns and other people come in here and we have to do this. The freedom pride that I've been told about so much, I am not seeing right now. And I, I'm married into it. I love this town. That's why when we moved back here nine years ago, we chose freedom. We had the choice of Moreland, Buffalo, Winoka, Alba, we chose freedom. And I think we need to keep it the way that you guys made it when you were here. You guys have had the freedom pride. I'm the outsider looking in and I wanna do this. Done.
Oh, Abby. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn at that. It's a code of war. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Bower.
Yep.
Reed.
Yes.
Hera.
Yes.
Morris.
Yep.
Jessica.